Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 14th Plenton Board of Selectment meeting. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video for this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. So it has been our tradition of late to start with a moment of silence. And since our meetings have been filled with words, we will have a moment of silence tonight. Used for whatever purpose, to collect our thoughts, to just enjoy a time without words, or maybe a time for gratitude for the opportunity that we have. It's not so much silence. The opportunity we have to serve the town that we adore. So again, welcome, everyone. Couple of ground rules. We do try to practice patient urgency, certain style of getting things done in a time-sensitive way, but with a particular style. We do ask speakers to be time-sensitive, to get to their point as succinctly as possible so that others have a chance. We do keep a parking lot for issues that may come up that warrant attention, but maybe not attention tonight, so that we don't lose those issues along the way. We have tried of late to promote a sense of civility and orderliness in town government so that we encourage others to serve, and hopefully we can do that tonight. And then lastly, albeit we fully recognize the seriousness of the work that we do, if we can bring along some joy and laughter along the way, we are very much glad to do that. So can everyone agree to those ground rules this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the agenda has been published. The way it's set up tonight is we do have appointments at 6:00 with the esteemed Mr. Coulter. At 6:30, we have a representative from Borrego Solar here. At 7:00 or 7:15 or so, FinCom will be in. So we'll do each of those. If any of those appointments end before the next one, we'll do some of our other agenda items. Sort of be a touch disjointed, but we try to make good use of time. So are there any other agenda items that people wanted considered this night, tonight, beyond what's been published? Okay. So it is, in fact, a little after 6:00, and we're thrilled to have Mr. Coulter here to talk about marijuana legislation. I don't know if you want to introduce any further?
No, no. I had just reached out to Tom to come in and let us know what's happening with this. There had been mentioned, and we just, I was curious as to what was happening. So I asked Tom, and he's been wonderful to agree to come in and talk to us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and three of your two members. My late, good friend Joe Freitas once said, after I made a grave mistake at town meeting, "Don't ever insert yourself in the middle of town government." So I'm here begrudgingly trying not to insert myself in the middle of town government. As you know, Mr. Chairman, I respect greatly the work you do. I'm not going to, tonight, in any way, shape, or form, try to convince the board or your citizens of any of my positions. I've simply been asked by the board and by the citizens to seek the advice of a House Counsel who drafted the legislation. And we then also sent the request over to Senate Counsel, who concurred with the opinion of House Counsel. So I've given the board members a copy of House Counsel's letter to my office. I'd like to read, not the letter, it's fairly lengthy, but I think the relevant parts that could at least give you the flavor of what House Counsel has said. Again, the following advice I had received from the Chief Counsel to the House of Representatives, when asked to file legislation to clarify that marijuana is excluded from the right to farm, 40A Section 3, House Counsel has asked me to make sure that you understand, he is the Counsel to the House of Representatives. He's not anyone else's counsel. So the advice, which is freely given, can be freely dismissed. I'm going to read three pertinent sections, which I think capsulize the issue. His first bullet, Section 3 of Chapter 40A specifies subjects which are exempt from local zoning ordinances and bylaws. One of those exemptions is for commercial agriculture, aquaculture, horticulture, et cetera. Nothing in Section 3 of Chapter 40A exempts local zoning ordinances or bylaws relating to controlled substances pursuant to Chapter 94(c) of the General Laws, which is known as the Controlled Substance Act, which deals specifically with controlled substances. I'm going to go right to his conclusion on the second page. And it says in part, "Because marijuana is specifically defined in both Chapters 369 of the Acts of 2012 and in Chapters 94(c) of the General Laws as a controlled substance, it does not fall within the exemptions to local zoning ordinances and bylaws established by Section 3 of Chapter 40A of the General Laws. Therefore, municipalities may adopt local zoning ordinances and bylaws related to the sighting and operation of medical marijuana operations." Let me repeat that. "Municipals may adopt local zoning ordinances and bylaws related to the sighting and operation of medical marijuana operations." To conclude, and this is his final paragraph, "To conclude that marijuana is agriculture for the purpose of Section 3 of Chapter 40A would require a court, by implication, to interpret marijuana into the clearly defined statutory term of agriculture, thereby redefining the term for agriculture in a way which would be wholly inconsistent with the separate, clearly defined statutory term of marijuana. A court would have to turn the rules of statutory construction on their head to reach this conclusion. It would, in essence, be the equivalent of a court saying that one law, in this case, Section 3 of Chapter 40A, permits, by implication, what two other laws, in this case, Chapter 94(c) of the General Laws and Chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012, specifically prohibit." Bottom line, and this is the attorney writing to me, "I don't think it's necessary to amend Section 3 of Chapter 40A to specifically exclude marijuana, and therefore, any legislation would merely recodify the current law." Now, he said, "Upon request of the town or its citizens, if we find necessary, a simple amendment to the current law could be filed," this means as follows. "Section 3 of 40A of the General Laws is hereby amended by striking out in line 39 the word 'thereof' and inserting in place thereof the following words: Provided, however, that term agriculture shall not include the growing, cultivation, distribution, or dispensation of marijuana." So in part, I'm a non-attorney. My layman terms of what he has said to me over the phone and has provided to the board is that marijuana clearly is dealt with in statute, but not in 40A, and that in 40A, it does not allow for growing of marijuana. He thinks it's very clear. The Senate Counsel confirms his understanding that it's very clear. But if it's not, and it's never been challenged anywhere else in the state, Plenton would be the first test case. And if the board so desires, or the citizens so desire, an amendment can be very quickly filed this week, which would be taken up an informal session to codify what House Counsel and Senate Counsel believes is already the current law. So again, I'm not an attorney, so if you ask me difficult questions about the law, it would be vague. Senator Brady has joined us. Please develop mine.
Listen, we only give one soup a day, and he got it today. Tomorrow is my turn.
So again, neither the senator nor I want to insert ourselves into this debate. So we've been asked to provide clarity, and I've asked House Counsel to provide that clarity, the senator has asked Senate Counsel to provide that clarity, and the Senate Counsel has weighed in. To them, it seems very clear, but I think that's about as far as I'm happy to go, because I don't want to insert myself into this debate.
And the representative mentioned, we spoke to the Senate Counsel. They almost verbatim have the same information as the House Counsel.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Tom, if you were to do an amendment, what's the turnaround time?
We have two types of sessions, formal session and informal session. What the senator and I would do is call a meeting with the Senate President and with the House Counsel and the Senate President. The Senate President, the Speaker of the House, House Counsel, and Senate Counsel in the Speaker's Chamber. We would just explain the situation, we'd let the House Counsel and Senate Counsel explain the extraordinary situation. If the Speaker was to conclude, and the Senate President was to conclude that this is a non-controversial issue, it's just a point of clarity and to codify the existing law, then we can do it in informal session. It could be turned around in a week. If it's something that rises to the level of being controversial, then it may have to go to full session, which could take months. It is one of those things that in informal session, you need to understand, you only need one member to stand up in an informal session to object, and the process stops. But I believe, given that House Counsel and Senate Counsel concur on their interpretation, it's something that could be taken up very quickly in informal session. Being known, though, that they don't think it's necessary. They think it's already crystal clear, and only upon request would we file it.
Okay. Thank you.
And the request would come from?
It could come from one citizen. We're required by statute to file legislation at the request of the citizen.
We have a citizen. And you have a citizen.
Does that do it? Did the citizen just request?
It would require written. And I didn't hear that come from the chair, it's like an allegation.
Okay, so if, in fact, that went forward, and if, in fact, the informal session would do it, are we talking a matter of days or weeks?
It all depends. If there's nobody who objects, things can be done, as Tom mentioned, in an informal way. If one person objects, it could go to a formal session, it could take some time.
Given that House and Senate Counsel both concur, I think it would move in days.
And then they're already stating, based on what their findings are, the law almost already exists, and I'm not an attorney either, but that's what the legal counsel told both times, and I'm not vice in the Senate.
So it's not necessary, but it's possible to do this amendment?
If there were a conflict, it would be a remedy to the conflict. But again, the senator and I like to stay out of conflict. I still have Joe in my ear reminding me of that.
Yeah, why?
Was anybody there that evening?
What year was it?
My freshman year.
That may be.
I made a freshman mistake.
Comments from the audience? Okay. And I'll just say, we'll stay on this specific issue and, as best possible, avoid repetition of things that we've heard already.
Maureen Doyle Ring Road, so does it need to go to them, or is this enough information for you folks to realize that it's not farming?
I want to talk to town council first. I mean, you know, last Monday night, we had three different lawyers from two different parties with three different opinions, and now we have the fourth and the fifth attorney opinion on this, and so I'd...
But the fourth and the fifth attorney were the people who drafted the legislation, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Understood. Sir?
Chris Housley Ring Road. I missed the Board of Selectment meeting here a few weeks back. I was out of country. I'm sure you guys missed me terribly. But I was watching it early today to see what I missed out on, and actually, Mark Russo, Mr. Russo, I'm going to quote you, which is maybe kind of rude, but it was kind of succinctly summing up the feeling, I think, you felt yourself, and how the board felt. And you had said, "In a lot of ways, our lives would be incredibly easier if we got to the point that we have good expert advice that this isn't permitted. Like, thank God, this whole mess is over, and over with, and it really would be good for my life, it would be good for your life," you know, et cetera, et cetera. So my question, at this point, to each of the board members, is what else, or what better, could be considered good expert advice than the two lawyers who actually drafted the state of Massachusetts medical marijuana laws? So I don't think, short of litigating this in court, you're going to find anybody that would be considered more expert than who we've heard opinions from this evening. So here's the question, who would be better about these things?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sir, please, please.
I think it's important to understand that legislation is not a science. Because whenever you have the written word, there can be different interpretations of the same legislation. So it's not unusual that we have to do clarifying legislation to codify the original intent of that legislation. So I think what the two Counsel are speaking to is, A, they believe it is clear, but B, in the absence of clarity, they're at least speaking to intent. The intent was not to transfer agriculture under 40A to be a permissible use to grow marijuana. And if, in fact, there is confusion, and that happens, it does happen among honorable people, it happens, that they believe the remedy would be to codify it through a clarifying amendment.
Comments?
Well, I think that if there's confusion, then that's our best course of action. If there's confusion about this being allowed with all the different attorneys' opinions, I think that we should have this codified and be done with it.
And just further follow-up, I shouldn't speak for her, we can get a letter from her, but the chief lawyer of the Commonwealth, Attorney General, agrees with the interpretation of House Counsel.
So I would also be more comfortable with it being codified, and if people who are interested in pursuing the 40A3 aspect want to fight it with you guys, then that's fine.
I also agree. I think we've heard a lot of different opinions. There are clearly many different ways to read this. I think we have to be careful to make judgments based on the law as it is presented to us, and if it's unclear, seek clarity. I'm certainly not at all willing to make any decision tonight. This is a wonderful document Mr. Coulter has given us. We have just received it, haven't had a chance to read it. I would certainly want to hear from town council if we were going to make any decisions based on this. Because we've been through so much, because everyone's been through so much, since the applicant has been through a lot, since the people that are opposed to it have been a lot, through a lot, I think the absolute surest way to be certain we're as much as we can to move forward properly is if there is an easy way to codify this, that makes total sense to me. I think it puts the process on a little bit of hold for a while, which probably is a good thing, while we wait and see. If the legislature is going to make a definitive statement on this, then it'll be done, and we will have done our work in being as careful and thoughtful as we could be on the process.
So you would like us to find legislation, to codify legislation?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we request that you file that legislation.
First thing in the morning.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're unanimous on that. Appreciate you guys coming in and helping us get there.
We appreciate it.
And I apologize, I was a few minutes late. I did have a wait to go to the governor's mother pastor.
You missed a great introduction.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Excuse me, did any of you sign in? I had a sheet, you did at the front?
I don't know. I'll take the correspondence.
Okay.
Are you going to address the other item of the agenda, or is that no longer included?
Consider the motion for hosting agreement. I think we'll certainly wait until we get clarity on it.
So you're not going to be discussing that further tonight?
Unless my colleague to the right and left, no, guess we're good.
Yeah, let's pass it over. Good night.
You don't want to stay for the rest?
I'll bring you a sandwich.
Good night.
Good night.
All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Inspector of An... So we have four minutes until 6:30. We'll get to Zach, so let's see if we can get a few more items done. Boy, that's one way to clear the room. Inspector of Animals nomination, you were going to check with Frank.
Frank was, is interested in continuing as our inspector of animals. So I don't know, Bree, do you have the form for the animal inspector?
That would have been last week's...
It was last week's correspondence.
Appointment.
Yeah, the appointment.
I can get it by the end of this meeting.
Okay. Because Mike will have to sign it, I believe.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Frank Bush, the inspector of animals, for, I don't know what the dates would be, probably July 1st. I don't know what that turnaround.
Why don't we come back to that at the end?
All right, okay.
I think he's 6:30 to...
You think it's 7:01?
I think he's 6:30 to 7:01, or 7:01 to 6:30.
6:30?
I believe so.
It's 7:01 to 6:30.
It is 7:01 to 6:30? Okay, so it is 7:01. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Frank Bush, the inspector of animals, effective June 30th, I'm sorry, 7/1/16 to 6/30/17.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
That seems a long way away, doesn't it? 2017? Unbelievable.
Can't come too soon.
Oh, geez.
Let's see. What can we do in a couple minutes?
Want to do a little bit of correspondence?
Sure.
Okay. All right. From Xfinity, "Please find the 2015 license fee payment for your community."
I don't know exactly what this is, but it is a check.
4/29/50.
And I think it isn't the surcharge and the money for the cable.
It's 50 cents per subscriber.
Yep. I think we have to sort out, actually, whether this goes to the town, or goes to the...
Mr. Chairman? Goes to the town.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
You get 50 cents per subscriber as a licensing.
Thank you Comcast.
So more people subscribe, we get 50 cents a year, our fiscal woes would be cleared out.
Yes, we can turn this over.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that information and that clarification.
Okay. One more thing from Xfinity, "In keeping with our ongoing efforts to provide regular updates, I'm writing to inform you that effective April 12, 2016, Al Jazeera America has announced that it will cease operations and its programming on Channel 107. Please be advised, customers are receiving notification in advance via bill message of this information, and then contact information if we have any questions." Okay. Can we keep going?
Sure.
Okay.
You're going to run out of material.
Oh, you know what we had that we received? Oh, you don't happen to have the cover on this one, do you? Oh, here it is, right here. This is the...
The actual email itself.
Yeah, the email itself. Basically, it's a Senate bill to, so that with the regional school students who are attending vocational ed outside district, we would no longer have to pay the transportation cost. I believe that this is stuck in committee, and the author of this bill is asking us to reach out to a contact in the email to ask them to move this out of committee so that it can move along the process. So this is, does not have to do with special education. This is for districts that have vocational programs where students are choosing to participate in a vocational program in another district. We pay their tuition, and we pay the transportation costs, which are generally $20,000 to $30,000 per student. This legislation is so that the town would not be responsible for transportation costs for students choosing to go to vocational programs out of district.
So they're asking for our support?
They're asking for our support to move this out of committee. It's stuck in committee now, and thank you.
You're welcome. Individually, or just a letter from the board?
Let's see. If you wish to contact, well, and the deadline is tomorrow, too, March 16th. They didn't give us a whole lot of time. "If this issue is important to you, knowing that this bill would save thousands of dollars to your citizens, taxpayers, and up to $4 million in state reimbursement funds, please notify your state representative and senators and ask that they contact Representative Alice Peish, I think it is, Peish or Peish, Alice Pahn, to ask that the bill be moved out of committee before this Wednesday, March 16th deadline. In addition, if you would like to contact Representative Peish herself to seek the bill moved out of committee, her email is alice.pesch@mahouse.gov."
So maybe the easiest is for each of us to write?
Yeah, and can she forward that?
Yeah, I will definitely forward you the emails, yeah. And then I thought I'd send it to Susan and school committee and Maureen Springer, too, just so that everybody's aware of this. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Enough correspondence?
Are you pulling it in?
I'll, why don't you forward it?
Forward it to both of you?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. I guess we're up to Zach. Do you have a preface to this?
No. Yes, I do.
I thought so. We'll give you a moment to collect your thoughts, and then share them.
Zach is here from Borrego with a contract to sign for the pilot agreement, which we were given the authority to enter into at the 2014 town meeting. The contract has been vetted by our town council, and originally was worked on by John Henry, and as far as I know, we're ready to go.
Yep, that's correct. Last time I came, a couple homework assignments, like Colleen said, was to make sure the form matched exactly with what the latest Copeland Page form is. There were two minor changes, but nothing much here, a couple weeks ago. And also to provide you guys with the proof of contract that the legal right passed from TJ A Solar directly to Borrego Solar. So I have a copy of that contract fully executed for your review, as well as three versions of the pilot agreement, because you guys are reading this assignment.
Beautiful. Okay. Do I hear a motion, or, sir?
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, this is Spring Street.
Location. Location. Please look, Spring Street.
Spring Street, location.
All right, well, I make a motion, you sign.
Absolutely.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Terrific, thank you, guys. One version with you guys, and your entire version that's signed, I'll take with me.
And you have the contract from giving you the authority, just... I assume that this is also going to town council. I sort of asked him, but I didn't get a response, so...
It has not been to town council. It's a very clear document from my standpoint.
It looks like it's just me that signs.
So this is, the warrant article specifically mentioned the TJ, whatever, and so this gives the, I'm sorry, this transfers from... and so this gives the, the, I'm sorry, this transfers from TJI, TJA?
TJA.
To, um, Borrego. So that they're still within the bounds of our warrants, despite the name change.
They took many more words to say that than you did.
A lot, a lot more money involved, I guess.
All right. Well, let's sign these, and off we go.
So, I'll have these countersigned, I'll continue to communicate back with you, Colleen, and, um, once you guys get your inquiries from Copeland Page, you can forward that on to me, and I'll have it for your first, for the contract.
Great.
Will we get copies of this contract?
I'm leaving one of them.
Okay.
Or, are you gonna take both and have them signed, and then one come back, or...
Um, I brought a third one, if that's how you'd like to do it.
Oh, okay.
Um, if you wanna sign the third one, I'll have two countersigned, and so you could have one.
Yep.
That's just over on the record.
Perfect. Thank you for all your help with this.
No problem.
Yeah, we really appreciate you coming in. Is, and is there a little bit more discussion coming?
We still have some questions about net metering, but Dale's actually set up a, a meeting with Blue Wave for Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning at 10:30.
So, we have to find out where we are with them before we can...
Yeah.
Move forward with Borrego.
What I need is...
Oh, okay.
Zach, I'm not sure I have it.
I wanna take two, so I can sign two.
Okay.
Right, exactly. I'll be executing copy, and you guys can keep the third.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so there's no further discussion on net metering?
No, well, Dale has some questions for...
If you could, if you could... Can you email me that?
Absolutely. So, just to summarize, um, right around the time Mr. Henry and I were speaking about this agreement, we were also talking about the town's interest in a remote net metering optake agreement, power purpose agreement, net metering agreement. Um, at the time, we provided a proposal to the town, uh, the town elected to lead with Blue Wave Capital, a competitor of ours, on another project. Um, it appears their project that you guys were slated on was either a project in Matapoisett or a project on Lake Street. Um, just through the development world, I've seen that project in Matapoisett is moving through a different SREC category.
Through a different what?
SREC category incentive, incentive program. So, that is currently moving through the affordable housing category, something you guys can certainly check on with Blue Wave. And I also fear that the Lake Street project is still caught up in appeals court, land court. So, what I wanted to do was, was offer a project that Borrego is going to be constructing in early May, in Freetown. We are, that this project is one of the last, or if not the only, N-Star ever sourced southeast mass, large-scale project that'll be built in the SREC 2 program. So, we're able to certainly match or beat any other offer that you guys have, because of the scale of our project, it's a five and a half megawatt project. Um, we finished all development, and like I said, are about to start construction. So, this is the time when Borrego starts recruiting, marketing, whatever your word is, for optakers. So, I wanted to offer this project as a replacement project, if, um, certainly the contractual terms you guys have.
Are you, are you willing, are you willing to meet the terms of the pending PPA with, with Blue Wave that we have?
I have not seen them, but based on my conversations with Mr. Henry in the summer, yes, I have.
Okay. So, if we wanted to go ahead, what would be involved?
So, I obviously know about these two projects, just from being in the area and being pretty dialed into the market. I don't know the details of the contract. Um, I respect Blue Wave as a competitor and developer, and if they have a contract with you guys that they're gonna deliver on, then great, I'd see the town happy. But at the same time, if they're not, I wanna make you guys aware of our project. And essentially, what I need to hear from Dale or from someone is that you guys are interested in moving to the next step with us. If you do, we'll simply transport the business terms of that contract that I haven't seen, but I imagine will be filed with us into an LOI or an MOU, just memorializing that. And then we will either pick up on that exact agreement, if you guys have spent a lot of money with your attorneys negotiating it, or we can introduce our standard form. I'd be more interested when you guys take the lead, because timing, time is of the, of the essence right now, because of how late stage our project is.
Yeah, we have no signed agreement, we have a proposed agreement at this point, uh, and, and, uh, and so I don't think it would be very hard to switch from one to the other. But we do define, just so people know what the difference is, um, you know, the, the different SREC, in other words, if Matapoisett is now in S, is now in the affordable housing, that SREC category, how that affects, how that might affect us?
Yeah, I think it's, obviously, everything should be confirmed with Blue Wave, I'm speaking, um, making assumptions here. But, um, based on what I see in the SREC market, that project has moved from category managed growth, which is the large projects, it's moved into category A, which is reserved for low, moderate income housing, community solar, carports, and some others. And, um, they do this by getting a certain type of optaker, the public, low or moderate income housing optakers. Um, so, that is how it appears to me, looking at the D O E R website. And I know from my conversations with Mr. Henry that you guys were originally discussing that project, if it moved...
Mr. Henry's right behind you, he can verify anything you need to...
So, so, yeah, I think basically, I know that you guys have selected Blue Wave as, as the most likely are the ones that you guys wanted to move forward on. And because I know those two projects are, are trapped, just based on one going a different path, another in the legal environment, our project is fully permitted, interconnection's paid, everything's squeaked clean on it, and, um, we are willing and able to move very quickly. The reason I'm being a little disruptive in this deal with Blue Wave is because the SREC program is currently subscribed, fully subscribed. So, no new projects will be built under the SREC 2 framework. If there is, and we expect there to be a new framework in Massachusetts, it's likely to be a less rich incentive, which means there's less savings available for optakers, less incentives available for developers, et cetera. So, I thought this was an opportune time, um, just to reintroduce our project in Freetown, to see if there is interest or opportunities.
And what would be the timeline, if they chose to go with the PPA from, your PPA offer from Borrego?
We would move as fast as you guys are. I think usually it's working with a town's council, it's a little bit slower than working with...
And you're talking about that facility being online by midsummer?
Um, it takes a little bit longer to build a big project, I'd be willing to guarantee a commercial operation date in 2016.
Okay.
Can I ask anything else? Does that pretty much give everybody?
So, your conversation with Blue Wave on Wednesday will be about the likelihood of being able to move forward?
Yeah, I had kind of a, um, a glitch in the communication with them, which I had to sort of really figuratively pound the table to get in touch with, which I was kind of surprised at. But in any event, I did set up a meeting for 10:30 with them on, um, Wednesday morning. And, uh, board's members are certainly welcome to, uh...
Oh, they will be.
Yeah. Colleen said she might be there, so that'd be good. And, um, and just basically to see, you know, it was an update, you know, where do we stand with the PPA, 'cause it's been sitting there for quite some time now, and, uh...
Yeah.
And in fact, is, are they doing the affordable housing thing, and therefore it is of no benefit to us?
Well, I don't know about no benefit, but I mean, it, it may be...
That's what you said.
Is that what you said? I mean, we won't, we're not qual, we can't qualify for a PPA with them if, in fact, this is now category A, SREC?
Yeah, the optakers need to be 100% low and moderate income housing optaker.
Okay, that's interesting. Okay, that's fine, I kinda know where this is going, and that's good.
So, I think, yeah, my basic offer is to be able to match, match their offer, and guarantee start, uh, start of production of solar field hours.
Yeah. I mean, they may wanna be meeting with us to move us to the Lake Street project, since they're gonna get going on that, and that's, but that hasn't, you know, I mean, there's still, still some stuff going there. I don't know where the, where that stands in litigation at this point, but it's been quiet for a while, so I'm assuming it's probably, um, it's probably relatively solved, and they're ready to go forward with it. But that's considerably farther in the future than your project, and where was the, your proj...
It's in Freetown.
Freetown?
Okay. So, you'd be able to match it, would you be able to exceed it?
I'm, um, I'm waiting for it a little aggressively, 'cause I haven't seen it, to see if I can match it, but, um...
What was the rate with Blue Wave, in the term?
Ten and a half cents.
What was the rate? Was ten and a half, no escalator?
With no escalator.
Twenty.
Should be able to beat that, the wholesale markets, a third of that rate.
Uh, that, not sure that you're gonna find one, you know, maybe beat it by a little bit, but I don't, haven't heard of too many...
I'll sign a PPA with the town if I want to.
Do you hold a solar field? I mean, do you have...
No, no. Carbonated energy, fossil power, and, uh, wholesale market has been $12, megawatt, million watt, or less than two cents a kilowatt. There's a lot of volatility in the electric power markets right now. Three years ago, the prices were much higher than they are today.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Larry Swartz, from Truck Farming.
Okay.
I work in the power industry.
So, in case our, uh, our projects, um, has our financier involved, a part, a financing partner involved too, that we can introduce you with, and to Mark's point, um, if you wanna discuss really arm wrestling over it, we could, we could find, find the best case scenario for both of us. We also have the flexibility to offer index rates, as opposed to just fixed rates. An index rate shifts the risk to the developer, and it essentially says that you get a percentage, you pay a percentage discount off the net metering credit rate. So, a typical rate is in the 20% to 30% discount, and, um, if a fixed rate is a hedge that you can potentially get underwater with, the index rate travels with the market, always at a, at a fixed discount. So, we've got some flexibility there, wasn't necessarily that cut and dry back in the summer, so, um, I think we could execute quickly, we could be flexible, and, uh, I agree.
Okay, let's see what happens Wednesday, you'll report next Monday, and, uh, we'll let you know where, where we are.
Great, well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you for making that offer.
Thanks for the offer. I know last week you had to stay for hours more to come back in, and we appreciate your time.
No, it was great. You guys will see us around a little bit, but, uh, very nice to meet you all.
Awesome. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Zach.
All right. Okay, so, we are, we'll work on some more items while we wait for FinCom to come in.
Okay.
Um, did you have any more correspondence?
One more, um, piece of correspondence from the Plimpton Halifax Express, um, growing wheat is agriculture, and Russo will not seek second term. It's nice there's a picture of a horse on the cover with you, so that's nice.
Thank goodness.
Who'd you end?
Who said that?
I'm sorry.
The pretty end.
Do you have your question?
Sure.
Do you have the numbers for the warrant? We needed those to try and get...
I mean, I, I don't, well, you know what, let me go up there and just briefly explain these to you at the same time.
Okay.
Not that there's much explanation, but this is sort of my shorthand spreadsheet and stuff.
Okay, um, just a little bit about Plimpton home invasion, and, um, I think that that was pretty much it, yeah. Oh, nice, um, article about Rita LaPointe, with, um, Cave Burcanum, 4-H.
I missed that.
Yeah.
Why?
Plimpton teen takes first place in 4-H dog visual presentation. Congratulations to him, that's fantastic. All right, Marshall Smith, from Plimpton. And that is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the next item is, uh, um, the town council review of the personnel policy handbook, right?
Yeah, he came back, we could. He, um, came back with, um, some changes. I didn't print it out and, um, and bring it in with me. I think the biggest one was, um, if memory serves, the disciplinary, I think he said he had two policies down there, um, and then, um, something about tightening up the, um, weather closure policy. And those were the ones that stuck out to me, but I think there were a couple things. It was, it's like Colleen's got it.
Take me, well, yes, but because I...
Oh, my gosh, it's so tiny, how could you even read that?
Because I'm cheap, I was just gonna concentrate for a minute.
And I seem to have misplaced mine, maybe we need another week...
Little changes on the Cory policy, inclement weather, disciplinary, um, th- those are the three majors.
I, I was okay with, with all of them, and whichever one, I think either one was fine with me. The one that maybe we can discuss a little bit is the weather policy, because, um, that's where we got into trouble this year, with misunderstanding within this building, and I understand he being concerned that we have restricted ourselves too much. The reason we added the language that not only, um, when, that we would be closed more or less automatically, not only when the governor declared a state of emergency, but also when the governor closed state offices in Poonah County. And, um, I understand his concern there. I'm feeling like, just for clarity within this building, that it created so much, um, consternation, that it's better that we leave it in for the time.
I agree. Yeah, his recommendation was that the policy be amended to give the town the authority to determine whether or not it will open or close.
We have the authority through that committee.
Yeah.
It felt to me we did, and even, even my understanding is, it is, those two directives would then direct the committee to go ahead and close town. So, I, with all due respect to town council, you're probably not listening in tonight.
Probably not.
But that one I'd leave, and then I guess we just have to decide on which of the two paragraphs. So, shall we give that one more week plan to get that done next week?
Perfect, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's that. Uh, anything else, or, I, I don't wanna, um, shortchange any other solar updates, uh...
No.
Okay. Um, all right, so town council, so that brings us to the town annual report. Actually, that we probably need to wait for Dale on, so why don't we come back to that? Um, so, there was one other piece of correspondence, I think it came today, Monica wrote us...
Yes.
Um, and, uh, asking us when we could meet.
Mm-hmm. I forwarded that to Susan, and I haven't heard back from her. They wanna have a, I believe, a preliminary discussion about our, um, uh, plan, our capital improvement plan.
Great. Um, so, I, if, if it's gonna happen in the near future, I could be available this week, I could make myself available next week. Um, it, the week of March 28th or April 4th would be hard for me. At worst, if she wants to have it, then you could go ahead without her.
I'd rather have you here, too. I mean, you wanna be here, don't ya?
Oh, she likes me.
No, I, but I mean, I do like you.
No!
But, um, yeah, I mean, you're interested in this, you wanna...
I'm very interested in this.
Yeah, so, let's wait, let's do it when you can be here, too. And Colleen, you're gonna be gone, too.
I'm gonna be gone, too.
So, let's do it a time that we're all gonna be here, and, I mean, there's no great hurry, we're looking at 2018 to 22.
Yep.
So, we'll schedule it when everybody can be here.
Okay. Okay, so that takes care of Monica. Let's, anything, well, so we're on that sub, or...
Who's Monica?
Collins Group.
Okay.
She's the lead from the Collins Group.
I didn't get that email.
I'll forward you the email.
Actually, I didn't get the email either.
Oh, you're right, you didn't. It just came to me and Mark. I'll forward it to you, Colleen.
Okay. So while we're there, anything else on the Collins Group at this point?
No.
Anything else about board goals and priorities? That brings us down to government vacancies. Tara's done a good job of getting the word out that it is the time to take out papers for public office and our weekly plea to talented citizens that want to get involved. Much of this town government runs on the basis of volunteers and it's a lot of work and it's a great opportunity to feel purposeful and help the town. So people, please consider it. I think April 4th or 5th is the deadline for filing papers.
5th.
5th, okay. Okay, that's that. The town meeting warrants, probably we should wait for Dale to come back on. So let's go down to dates to remember. We have a meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting, March 21st, '28, and then probably weekly in April. Public Safety Building Committee is meeting this Wednesday.
Yes.
Is definitely meeting next Wednesday. Any more comments about public safety?
Actually, ModSpace was going to come on the 23rd and it turns out that they cannot.
Okay.
So that will have to be rescheduled. So next week's meeting, I think, is still going to be on because we should be getting consultant applications back by then. But kind of play that by ear. But this week is on at 6 o'clock on Wednesday.
So I think we don't have any minutes or to?
I sent the, I sent a week before me. I should have got it, I should have got it though.
Did I?
Yeah, at 4 o'clock when I broke the clock and thought it was 3.
I?
Nope.
You know, I don't know if I did the minutes from last week's meeting. I can't remember. Did I do those?
I-
I did not receive them.
You could have.
No, I don't think I did that.
Well, all right. So we'll save them for next week.
Okay.
Would be good, definitely, to have them and approve them next week because I'll be missing the next couple of meetings. And in general, I think just as a model for other committees, we have to collectively do that.
Absolutely, yeah. That's my bet, definitely.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In the event that Tom gets back to us and you're not here, I'd feel better that we do, that we look at this as a full board.
Look at?
When, if he comes back with a codified, that we wait until we have a full board to address it.
Yeah, that probably makes sense. I mean, if it comes back codified, then I think it probably is a no-brainer on how this is going to go.
Okay. All right, well, if it comes back codified.
But let me, you know, he handed us this fairly dense document. Haven't had a chance to read it.
Okay.
Maybe we can readjust that next week.
Sure, okay.
I mean, obviously, I think we're-
I mean, we may even know by next week.
We're turning down the volume on the whole thing for a while.
Yeah. And I just don't want to take action if, you know, you want to be here.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And-
Are you not here on the 28th, correct?
Pardon?
You're not here on the 28th.
Yes, I won't be at this meeting on the 28th nor the 4th.
Or 4/4.
I think in three years I've missed one meeting. Those I have unfortunately planned for a year that I have to be away and I apologize for that. I apologize profusely for that. All right, so the one other item that I wanted to talk about in terms of dates to remember, our meeting next week. There has been, was last week, there has been some email about the Brook Street group home. And we did discuss last week the possibility of having the principals, the owners, come in. I did chat with them and they would prefer not to come in to a full Board of Selectmen meeting. They were interested in meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I made clear to them that open meeting law didn't allow that. They are more than glad to meet with one of us and for us to ask anything we want and then convey that. I am glad to do that unless one of you is interested in doing that.
No. I mean, I'd prefer they come in.
Yeah, I would too. I think that the public is-
Entitled to that. There was a breakdown and I think that people have the right to ask questions and to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And I know it's going to be uncomfortable or, you know, I can imagine it would be, but it was a pretty significant issue.
Kim?
Hi, I have a question. Simply because they are a business, if someone broke into another business, broke out of another business and did something that scared, would the board actually call them in? I'm just wondering where the authority comes in there. I mean, you can ask them, obviously they've been asked, but we're just-
I don't know. That's a good question.
Something happened at the tire station and, you know, I don't, it's-
That is a concern for me as well. I mean, I think we certainly can invite. I don't think we can compel. And just as a reminder, I, the Board of Selectmen, we're not directly involved in any decision on this. The major issue when this project was contemplated was a zoning issue and it went before the zoning enforcement officer, went to zoning Board of Appeals, and that's where the main thing lied. I would like, however we do this, to just seek more information to the degree that they are willing to volunteer on what broke down, on what lessons have been learned and what can be done to limit or eliminate this kind of stuff in the future. And I, I'm feeling like that's as far as this board can go at this point.
Do they get a business license from the town of Plimpton?
No.
They don't?
No.
They're licensed by the state.
Yep.
Okay, so no license from the town.
You know, which, which in no way limits our concern about this.
Right.
It's just choosing the right venue and I, and certainly there could be legal issues involved as well. So really, the question before us, I am more than glad to speak with them, re-invite them if they want. I'm more than glad to ask these questions and report back to the board.
What about you meeting with them and if residents wanted to go, they could go? Where it's not a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, but if people have questions to ask, that they're there, but it's not a, not an official selectmen's meeting? If you could like schedule something? I don't know if that's possible.
I think if they wanted to deal with the public, that would be something for them to do on their own. Or they obviously could ask, if they wanted to ask for a venue, this is a totally reasonable venue, so.
Okay, all right. Well, I just would ask you to compel them to come before the board, to strongly suggest they do. I mean, if they don't, they don't. If we don't have any recourse, then so be it. But I would like to see their, their operating rules and I would love to, yeah, then get your report back if they're not willing to come in and talk to us about what they're going to do to prevent this from happening again.
So if, if, I mean, I don't think we can compel. I think we could strongly suggest.
Just strongly suggest, as strongly as you can.
That self-asserted mistraining course way back when that I didn't do so well on.
Need you to come.
We'll see if we can make it work this time. All right.
FinCom says they'll be alone as quickly as they can.
Very well. So a couple of choices there. I suppose if I speak to them this week, I could report as early as next week, or we could wait until my return, which would be April 11.
I think we should do this sooner, sooner's better than later, yeah.
So I will report next week. I'll put it on the agenda as a report.
Okay.
And then we can see how to proceed from there.
Okay.
All right, everybody okay with that?
Okay, so we've got the policies next week.
Yep.
And this report next week. And, okay, perfect.
Okay.
And then you got a question on the matter.
Could the board query the state to see how other towns regulate and permit similar businesses? It just seems like, you know, the residents of our town should have more say about the rules and standards. It's a, it's a public safety concern.
Yeah.
I don't think we should just, all the state's taking care of it. Please ask the state for guidance.
Let me see what they have to say and then we'll, I think that's a possibility. I'm not sure we'll get this all done next Monday night. We'll just keep working on it.
Yeah, it'll probably just be a start, but.
Yeah.
I just have a comment as a citizen. If I had a problem with any sort of business next to me, especially in a small town like this, I think my first recourse would be to go over and knock on the door and say, hey, let's talk. And I-
Is it a public facility? That would feel uncomfortable.
Is your house public? I could go knock on your door and ask you a question though. I mean, you could say, you know what?
I wouldn't be happy about it.
Well, you say you wouldn't want to talk, but you'd answer the door, you know?
Fair enough.
But anyway, I just think that that might be, I run the business in town. I would hope anybody would do that as a place to start and especially any business that's concerned with really getting along in your community.
But that would be up for that, up to them to make that announcement, that they would love to, you know, be happy to meet with neighbors, to discuss their concerns. And that has not happened.
I will certainly write them a letter expressing my concern. What is the name and address of the business? I'm not even sure.
I just know the address.
Number 5.
What's the name of the business?
The Brook Retreat, number 5, Brook Street.
It's 55.
It's 55 Brook Street.
Sorry, 55 Brook Street.
Yeah, don't send it to the neighbors.
All right. Before we get too far down the road, I want to, I hope, just go at this carefully, stepwise. I'll report next Monday. We're not going to resolve everything by then. I have a feeling they're going to be here for a long time. That is the Brook Retreat. I have a feeling we're going to be here for a long time, so we'll just, we'll keep working on it and we'll try to optimize the situation as best we can. I mean, obviously, you can't, we want to minimize safety or minimize risks. You never can eliminate them, but let's see what we can find out.
Right, right.
Okay, so Dale is back. We can jump back up to the town annual report. And Dale was kind enough at our request to write the Board of Selectmen report. Have we each had a chance to take a look at this?
Yeah.
I had, my only comment was that maybe we should elaborate a little. The Collins report is such a wonderful thing that maybe we need a few more sentences on that.
Is this calendar year or fiscal year?
Generally, calendar year. They generally, the report runs calendar year.
I mean, you could say we won the grant.
Yeah.
That we were awarded the grant.
Because there's actually been a lot of stuff that happened after a year old over it.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but we did get the grant and, and, you know, I think even the sentence on that we're, this is going to give us an opportunity for financial forecasting, for long-term capital planning, and for reorganization of finance offices. Just to get the word out there.
Financial policies.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, yeah, I think that would be very beneficial to put all of that in. And then also that you guys, before I came on, had formed the, or actually, no, you may have done it right when I came on, formed the committee to look at the DOR report that should probably be mentioned too, that we were looking at, that formed after you rejoined. We looked at, we received the report.
Okay.
Said we're going to start doing something about it.
Yeah, and that, you know, we were looking at addressing the issues that were-
It says the Selectmen continue to implement recommendations made by the DOR.
Okay. Well, maybe we could say we could, we formed a committee who's currently looking at the, you know, addressing the issues and just elaborate a little.
In the long run, I mean, doing the DOR thing two years ago that we did this, the Collins Group this year, in the long run, is by far the most important thing that this board has done in terms of long-term financial health.
Exactly, I agree.
So we get to toot our horns on that a little, I think.
Yeah, next year too. Because that's when everything's happening is now, you know?
And the year after that, and the year after that. So I know Colleen has several things. Do you have other things on the report? First break.
I know, I, you formed a couple of the new committees. So like the DOR advisory.
Right.
Am I going to get a report for that?
Oh, sugar. Yeah.
It dawned on me that we needed a report.
That's what I get for picking it up, man. All right, so DOR Advisory Committee.
You did another one too, was the Community Compact, but, okay.
All right, Community Comp.
Okay.
Uh, we really haven't done anything yet, but DOR we have. So Community Compact is going to be next year. DOR will be this year. I'll give you, I would definitely give you a report.
Is there another one that was with the Cable Group?
Cable Advisory Committee?
No.
No.
I mean, that's the board-
It's you and Karen Foy, is that, that's not a committee?
No, no, it's not a committee. We are on the Board of Directors of the nonprofit organization, which is Area 58. So I don't think there's any report on that.
And I also forgot about Public Safety Building. I have written it. It's gone out to committee members and we will confirm it on Monday. On Wednesday.
When do you need those?
That's February 22nd.
February 20th?
Yeah.
All right, I'll write it and I'll send it to you, Susan.
What was the amount on the Collins grant? $46,000?
$45,000.
$45,000.
All right, do you have other things on the annual report? You have some stuff.
I just, I have a lot of little typos and capitalizations and things like that. And as far as, as the body, I kind of wrote the first paragraph over.
Well, Dale's was just a start. Do you want to finish it? Do you want to tweak it?
I could do that.
She's a great writer.
She is a great writer.
She's a great writer. She really is.
Yeah, she really is.
But a very slow thinker.
It's not a perfect world.
I need a pen and paper in my hand. Yeah. Colleen is a great writer.
Great writer.
I will, I will-
Thank you.
Okay, so do you have those additions then?
I do not, but I'll get them.
Yeah, I can get, just, yeah, the financial forecasting and the-
All right, so hopefully we can finalize that next week. It'd be good to have that done. Similarly, are you doing okay, Bree, with other boards, commissions, departments?
Yes, I only have one, though, from the memoriam. Only have one submitted, and that was for Honey Patterson. So I'd like to get a couple more. I put it out there and I'm not getting anything back.
Why don't you tell the people on the camera what you need, what you want?
Okay, well, you can.
I'm sorry, I know you don't adore public speaking.
No, not really.
So these, this is for people who have passed away in the, in the calendar year.
That you feel had done or provided things for the town that have made an impact on the town, maybe have served on a board or committee before. It would be great. I have one, it's a small paragraph about them and possibly a picture would be great. Last year they had three, I believe, so I was thinking to match that, to put in.
You're a great public speaker.
Thanks, Mark.
You did it. Nice job.
Okay, are we going to deal with the, what, can we deal with the photos tonight or do we, are we ready to do?
I emailed you photos.
You were going to email more.
Yeah, the one more, there's a group of them actually working on the boardwalk.
Is the-
There's a couple of people are actually in the water with data's on it.
Oh, very cool.
Is what, is that, is what you emailed?
There's 42 pictures on there. I had taken a selection of maybe nine pictures and I submitted them.
Yeah, I have, you know, first choice was the one that Bree emailed us, but I kind of thought it would be nicer to have a picture of people actually working as opposed to people standing there posing. Yeah, I think that would be neat too. Not that posing isn't fine. Are there a lot of people in the picture?
There are a lot of peo-, no.
Oh, that's only-
There's a couple.
There's a couple.
Maybe a couple.
You know, the two, I think some, one person is standing and there are a couple of people that are down, like on the sides of the boardwalk, actually in water. And there's another close-up of one where you can see where they're actually building the boardwalk. So there's some wood planks, a space, the wall.
Made, very cool.
And you can see them and you don't really see their faces that well.
Either way, I thought it would be nice to see those.
I, what appealed to me about the group picture is that sense of community, that the first picture is raising the funds, the second picture are all those sweaty, dirty, chilled people working, and then the picture of the final project of the boardwalk, and then the picture of the access that that gives to the wetlands and all that. So I kind of thought that told a very clear story, but also the subtext was the degree to which this was truly a community project.
Definitely.
Which is, which is a long-winded way of lobbying for the group picture rather than the work picture.
I'm comfortable with that, whatever you pick. Whatever you pick is fine with me.
The group picture is brighter than the one of just the, you know, the three gentlemen that are working. To add some color to the cover would be great.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a great picture. Yeah, yeah, that was a great picture.
There's actually two group pictures.
How many have you decided for the cover? How many photos? You can, you could use, I mean, you could use...
We were thinking of four, I suppose.
You could use, you could use five or six if you wanted to. It's just a matter of, you know, kind of collaging it, so one overlaps the other where it doesn't interfere with the, with the subject matter of one photo a lot, you know what I'm saying? And then you can kind of, you just sort of lay them all out.
Could have the group in the middle and then everything else kind of around it.
Yeah, that could be...
Could maybe do the one of the actual fundraising for it that says what you were trying to do?
The sign, yeah.
And then I think you could do a group picture of them working in this corner, the whole group in this corner, the top of it, a picture of the boardwalk, and so they all coincide with each other. Or you could do it like a circle.
Great.
I think those are all great ideas.
Do we want to put that together and take a look at how that looks?
I'll put a collage together.
Great.
Of the, I'll just pick one of the group, then my thing is, what group picture do you want, if you all wanted to decide, because there's two groups?
You pick the best one. They're pretty, they're both pretty close, as I remember.
Yeah, and they're good pictures, they're both good pictures.
Do you have software that you can...
So, one you're in yellow and one you're in blue, which do you like?
Make one big picture.
Yellow, yellow. I have a fifty-year-old that can do anything so far.
That's true, that's true. When the remote control gets messed up, call in the kids.
If I can't work anything, just ask, ask one of the children, that's all you have to do.
And then, did you have a choice for the, the boardwalk sign, picture rather? I like the one with the benches in it, because it was...
That was my favorite also.
Yes. Good. So, you'll present us with the next iteration of that?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Awesome.
You're very welcome.
Awesome, awesome.
I do have a question of the minutes, though. You never gave me the minutes that I submitted you from 2/22.
The 2/22 minutes?
We had them with you.
Are you talking executive session or regular session?
Regular session. And then I had to leave at the last meeting, I left at 8:15, and that meeting was still going on with the...
Was that last week, two weeks ago?
It was two weeks ago.
It, yeah, we...
Whatever submitted them to me.
Did we vote on them last week? I don't remember having any amendments to them, the 22nd. Do you have any notes for it?
I did not list the minutes of the 22nd, so I think...
No, that was last week.
I don't, did I put them in the note, the sheet that I gave you?
I gave them to you.
Yeah.
On the 2/29.
Maybe...
2/29.
9.
Well, if anybody took it, it's probably me.
I mean, it's certainly gonna be on the tape whether they voted on it.
And you only voted for the 2/17 ones. You didn't vote for 2/22.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't know if we did them.
Alright, we're gonna have to check that. I will add in, I will list the minutes that we need to approve next week, as we usually do.
I'll see if I have them.
You know who has them, it's Chris.
I know.
Chris, he takes everything.
Those sticky fingers.
Yeah, I know I have my copy at home, but I don't know.
I never got them back.
Alright, so we okay on minutes? Alright, so I think the last agenda item, and hopefully FinCom will appear quite shortly, is town meeting warrant articles, planning for the town meeting warrant articles. Anything new?
Well, this is, you can use this when the, this is the spreadsheet for the articles. They're not in any particular order. Anything in red requires more work, either the amount may not be defined yet, or something might be up with it.
So, I, I am, will be talking to town council about the town administrator. In terms of a placeholder, as far as you're concerned, all we need is the title, we need any more than that in the immediate...
No, I don't think so, no, at this point, no. Title is, town administrator position or something like that, just as a placeholder.
And what if we thought we needed more than one? And I'll ask him this as well. I mean, it's not clear to me yet whether we might need one or more than one.
One or more than one article.
To do it.
To do that?
To do it? Well, you probably need one to create the position and you'd need one to fund it.
Which would be the following.
Well, yeah, no, but Alana sort of alluded to another one.
Really?
In any event, he was supposed to get back to me today. It is still, alright, you have the Cable Enterprise Fund on there as a...
Yeah, and I have no language on that, so...
I know, I started, I started with Lauren, Town Council, in November on this. We waited three months for DOR guidance. We now have the guidance and I'm waiting.
There were no, there was, was there any money tied to that article, or is it just the creation of the enterprise fund?
We, we created it last year and DOR has vacillated on which of two ways to do it. So, no, there's no money involved other than creating the fund. We've been doing it one way, that may still be okay. It's possible, based on their latest directives, that we may need to do it a different way. If we do it a different way, as I understand it, we may have to put something on special, on the special warrant to rescind last year's thing. And I'm just waiting for guidance.
Okay, well, then let me know, I'll put that in. Well, the other thing that's not on here is that one non-binding citizen's petition that has to appear. I did not put that one on here. I just made a note to myself to add it.
We're obligated to put that on regardless.
Regardless.
Even if we...
Unless they withdraw it. Can they withdraw it, I wonder?
You know, I, that's tricky. I don't know.
I mean, before the warrant closes, I don't know if they could withdraw it.
We may have to check with the Town Council.
It is a little tricky, only in that, I mean, if you had the same people who were certified, petition to withdraw it, you could do that, but sometimes that's difficult. It's just a matter of passing it over if, if nobody wants to hear it at that, at that point.
Well, if action is taken, I think at that point, if we are taking action in what we talked about earlier this evening, if it's no longer relevant, I think then we'd have to go to Town Council and ask them what to do with it. Citizens petitions are super tricky because the citizens are protected, and even protected from our will or opinion on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And signatures is all it takes and goes on, no matter what.
Would Tara know if it could be withdrawn?
She might, I think I want to be really careful on that.
Yeah, it's probably better just to leave it.
It would be a five-minute conversation.
Right, just leave it.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think you can unilaterally withdraw it.
No.
Or as a board, you can't withdraw it.
No, I know we can't, nor, nor...
Would we want to, right.
Would we want to, exactly.
We also need a placeholder for the Public Safety Building Consultant.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And what about the land acquisition?
The land is on there.
Oh, the land is on there?
Yeah.
The land...
Number twenty.
Number twenty?
That's Silver Lake.
A land sale.
Yeah, we need land purchase, we need land purchase, that's different.
Right. Which is different from the Community Preservation Committee land acquisition. That's something different. So, yeah, we'll have to do that one too.
The CPC is, is...
Well, get, the, the one two for the Public Safety Building, the possible land acquisition, that one's gotta be added.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Looks good.
Anything else on warrant articles? We may have to go into recess for a few minutes.
When does this close? When does the warrant close?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, two weeks from...
Twenty-eighth of March or thirtieth of March?
Yes, two weeks from today.
Okay.
Two weeks from today.
Yeah, that's right, because it's, it's an exact number of weeks ahead of the town meeting, so. Alright, so I'm gonna add those in, the petition one, obviously, the land purchase, the consultant. Outside of that, I don't know that there's anything new in here. The financial audits are normal, Chapter 90, that's a normal, the revolving accounts, those are normal. Least owned cruisers is normal. The radio repeater is new from the police department, a fifteen thousand, three sixty. I explained that to the FinCom. Not sure on the command vehicle, that's the fire chief's command vehicle. I'm not sure if we haven't paid that, there may be a year left on that lease. It's in there, it'll, I'll take it out if we don't need it. The lease payments, those are normal, that's all for the fire equipment that we owe on. In fact, I think this is the last year of the big amount, and then it drops by about half next year. Community preservation, those are written in as, as they were presented. The potential land acquisition costs for CPC, that's written as, as presented. The assessors interim year evaluation and their triennial evaluation, those are both normal. Lighting upgrades to the fire department. TNT Energy did a, an audit, an energy audit at the fire station and came up with a fee, figure, a net figure for the town of eighty-one hundred and thirty dollars to replace all of the lighting and lighting upgrades in that building with the, and that's net, there's ever-source incentives that make that number eighty-one thirty. And also, the payback on that is two-point-six years.
Is what?
Two-point-six years, the payback.
What does that mean, payback?
That means that it'll, it'll, it will save us, the amount of money it will save us a year, will add in two-point-six years, will add up to eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Oh, okay.
Payback, return on investment years. TNT Energy funds for reimbursement, that's the thirty-eight thousand, the, the grant, that's on the Green Communities Grant that we got. And the grant coordinator for the Green Communities Program is hanging tough and will not pay thus the final payment until we pay the bills. That's what happens when you have the Commonwealth hire somebody with an art degree to be a grant coordinator.
No offense to people with art degrees.
No, 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 as long as they're not grant coordinators for the Commonwealth.
So, how do we untangle this?
Huh?
How do we untangle?
Well, it's, what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to borrow from ourselves, from stabilization, or from wherever the money is, the thirty-eight thousand dollars. The article is written in such that it, the reimbursement will go back to wherever the source money came from.
So, do we have to take action this year to get that untangled?
Yeah, this has been sitting for a year. We've been waiting.
Yeah, we have to pay it to be reimbursed, right?
I did, yeah, and this is again to TNT Energy, who's being very, very, very patient on this, because they've had, they've had the benefit of all of my email chains back and forth on that, and I won't comment anymore. Highway Department has made a request for road construction, whatever the money amounts to, they're talking about borrow, take, I don't know exactly.
I think we probably should have the highway surveyor in to talk to us on this, because...
Be nice to know what the, the projects are.
Well, we're gonna be asked to vote on each of these before town meetings, so could we plan in April, which meeting are you on?
Jimmy had some time to talk about it. And actually, the, I mean, I spoke with the Finance Committee tonight on that, and they're not, the amount is not certain at this point, and the source of the money, even up to borrowing or using existing funds, that's not, so, again, that's gonna be their call down the road. So, I would wait a while until that happens. I mean, if I don't hear, the article will just be written with every possibility in it for a sum of money, and then we put it out from there.
Well, regardless, I think we certainly, we, the Board of Selectmen, are gonna want to be updated on what's involved.
I would think so.
It's the 14th.
And the, the next one is the payback town of Kingston. I think we have one more year on that, maybe, maybe two more, but we know, I know we...
What is that for?
That was another Commonwealth, Commonwealth circus. The, for some reason, two, three years ago, the Commonwealth, in allocating their Chapter 70 money, didn't allocate to us, basically what ended up happening, in the way they, they allocated their Chapter 70 funding for the three towns in the district, Kingston got shorted a hundred thousand, and we got, actually, we paid a hundred thousand and something dollars less than we were supposed to. So, in good faith, they worked an agreement to pay the money back to Kingston, and we're, unfortunately, they didn't hold it to us all in one year, so...
I would just add that we probably weren't legally obligated to do that.
We probably weren't.
But in good faith, we did it.
Not true.
And it's something worth reminding Kingston about every once in a while, because I, I think we did, we absolutely did the right thing in that situation.
No, and that came up at the time, and you were not legally obligated to, I mean, the state made the mistake and the state should have changed it, but of course, that's not gonna happen, so.
I just add that the chairman of the Kingston Board of Selectmen has on numerous occasions thanked us for doing that, since they recognize...
Always nice to be good neighbors.
That's nice.
Well, if it's on the other way, we would expect the same.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Silver Lake, well, that's the placement for the, the land sale from Silver Lake to the town of Kingston for their police station. I don't have language from them on that yet. Has anybody got some language they can put?
Silver Lake?
Silver Lake.
We were given something in January or February, which I can forward to you. I don't, or maybe I need to check with Maureen to see if it's been updated. I'll work on that. There was, there was language that was suggested for the three towns.
It may have, it may have been there, and I don't remember, and I may have overlooked it in my emails, but if you've got it, send it to me.
I will check with Maureen.
And then we'll double-check to make sure that's still...
And I'll send it to you, but fully understand that we need to...
I'll vet it back with them, just to make sure.
Okay, very good.
And were we going to start the ball rolling on the highway supervisor's position? Making that an appointed position?
Yeah.
That's another possibility.
I just want to do that.
We had talked to Jim about it before, and it was his idea, actually, but if we're having him anyway...
I talked to Jim, and he, it's just about the, the article to make it appointed.
Making it appointed, yeah.
Yep, we could do that.
So, you talked to him and he, that's...
He said he won't oppose.
But it was his idea.
So, are we thinking we want to do something with that this year or wait until next year?
Might be best to do it this year, and if it fails, then we have next year, but it would give us an opportunity to talk about it, so people are aware of it.
Okay. So, Dale, maybe you need to put in a placeholder for the highway surveyor? And do one of you want to talk to Town Council about how we turn that into an article?
Sure, yeah, I can do that. I think we kind of have the language when we did it with the treasure collector, so it might just be a simple tweak on that, but I can certainly work with Council, just to make sure that we've got our ducks in row.
So, I make a motion that we authorize you to talk to Town Council about the highway surveyor position.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, and I'll find the old article to try to make it faster.
Okay. Alright, Dale, anything else from you before we go to FinCom?
Uh, no, I, nope, I'm fine. I'll put those in unless some, something else comes up, and I'll finalize it. Just easier to deal this way than it is to deal with the, with the draft warrant, because there's just a lot of language there that really, at this point, doesn't have to be.
Lot of paper.
Alright, Susan?
Two, I, there's, there are several of us that are working on a job description for the town administrator, should there be a...
Yeah, we just determined that that's coming in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, there's a placeholder going on for that.
There's a placeholder.
And that, and, and maybe two, I guess, depending on what Council says.
It isn't clear to me yet whether it needs one or two or more, and what other action Town Council and I tried to speak today, and he was in a car, so it didn't happen, so we'll keep at it and get it done.
And the other thing is, I don't know if it'll happen, but I, I personally would like to change the town, make a bylaw change, to change the date that we have to report to you about the capital improvement plan, because right now it's March 15, and every year, we just, it's, it's not a date that's workable, so we'd like to just push it out so, you know, much closer to town meeting, because we can always provide you the list of them, but at least you have some idea.
Is that codified in the bylaw?
It is.
That the date?
The March 15th.
Okay, yeah, why don't you just point me in the direction of the bylaw? What is it, FinCom bylaw? The one that establishes the Fin...
CX, CX.
CPI, okay. And...
I don't know what's about...
I can make the change, I'll just make the change, whatever you want. You want a placeholder for that anyway? I mean, you're asking for it.
What do you want for a date?
I don't know, but we, so today's the 14th, we just met for the last apartments tonight, so it's, other than providing sort of a list, it's really early for us to...
Do you want mid-April? Like, April 15?
We, well, may I ask this question? We do, we do it without recommendations, if you just want a list.
Yeah, if you just want a list, maybe, because I don't know, sometimes like recommendations don't come until right before I go for printout, or even after that, so I don't know that we want to make it so that we have to give recommendations.
Okay.
I almost think, and by now, I think we should have a list.
Okay, so maybe leave it...
Even if we just pull, push it out to, maybe to warrant when the warrant closes?
Yeah, that's very good.
The last Monday in the month?
Which is the last Monday in March.
Yeah.
So that would be the language, then, the last Monday in March.
Because you'd wanna definitely know by then, and we need to, everyone would need to know something by then.
Yeah, okay. That's good, I've got it. I'll, I'll change that language.
Anything else before we head into FinCom?
Those who will tell me.
Okay, we welcome FinCom. Thank you so much for being here, and the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the fact that we're having significant computer issues, so we couldn't even print a budget to bring with us, so we're gonna wing it, and we may go ahead and just go buy, buy one, because we can't function without one, it's sort of difficult, and I don't know what the process is, and we can do a reserve fund transaction.
What do you, what do you need? Tell me what you need, and, and we'll make it happen.
Laptop, we need a laptop that runs Excel and has Adobe, not just Adobe Reader, Adobe Acrobat.
I think, I think we have enough headspace to do that in this year's budget. I'll check.
Can we do it? Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, and you, you need, we need, obviously, you're gonna need a laptop with a little bit of horsepower if you're running, because you'll probably come through with, well, you'll probably, I mean, you know, you, you'll probably wanna do thirteen everything, and Windows ten and thirteen, but that's okay. That's the way they come now, anyway. You can't even, you can't even get a, if you have a computer with anything less than Windows ten, it reminds you every twenty minutes, it wants to give you the free upgrade.
I know two people that have, have installed Windows ten on their Windows seven machine and totaled them, so I haven't installed it.
Well, you know what? I, I avoided it for a while, and I did it, and it really wasn't that bad, but I think it's different every machine. But anyway, you need, let me call, I'll call Michael tomorrow and find out.
Thank you.
And then, it's not so much the cost of the machines, the cost of the software that tends to drive it. Do you have any proprietary software that you use?
The only thing is Adobe Acrobat, not just Adobe Reader.
Okay, no, that, that, that and Office Suite is gonna run probably six, seven hundred dollars, plus, plus the cost of the laptop. Okay, let me, I will call.
Is that like, quick, like, in two weeks, might we be able to have one?
I hope so.
Okay, cool.
So are you guys without functioning computer now?
It's off and on, literally.
No pun intended.
Never, never a good thing.
And it won't recognize the printer, so we can't print. It won't, and it wouldn't recognize the flash drive.
It's been turning itself off occasionally when other clients do.
Yeah, when she tries to access it remotely.
How old is it now? You've had that, what, five, five years?
I don't know. Five, six, five.
Yeah, they, they get tired. Little diodes get fried after five years or so, they're gone.
So, so anyway, that's, so overall, and I couldn't print, so our, um, the budget's in good shape, and that's because of a significant decrease, really, in the special ed budget issue. And so we don't want anyone to get a false sense that next year's gonna be great, you know, our year-to-year increase in special ed's usually pretty hefty, and we're very fortunate, I think the overall school, both the schools.
Down forty-three percent. The overall schools altogether.
Overall schools altogether, which is unfortunate, so.
Then include Silver Lake and town.
What are we looking at for Silver Lake now, for increase?
Four and a half percent for planning. They go to their budget first, though.
And Denny?
Well, if I could've printed it, it would've...
It's three and a half.
Oh, that's all right, that's all right.
Well, that's including sped.
Yeah.
It's two, well, that's just... We saw it.
That's okay, I'm just curious, more than anything.
So, we'll start from that, that we're not, we seem, and we don't have the Warren Articles, but we seem to be in okay shape, so I'm not sure what order to do this in, but the, so the bigger overall question is, you know, we have space under the levy, the estimate that we have now, is if we levy to the limit, the increase would be four and a half percent on property taxes. And again, we don't, we don't got, we don't have all our numbers, but it's possible, maybe, that we can levy under the limit, because that creates space under the levy, which is, means that we can have a big, a big increase the following year. So there's, there's an argument to be made that you should levy the limit every year, so that your sort of maximum increase is about two and a half percent. A couple of years ago, we had a bunch of space in, like, seven percent, because the budget was in horrible shape, so that's sort of a, I think, a discussion that we'd like some input on.
And we definitely wouldn't wanna levy, when we say under the limit, we mean under the four and a half percent. We definitely don't think we should levy, levy again under the two and a half percent. Like we said, we have started, from doing what we did, we have strong feelings that if you just keep the levy at the two and a half percent, most people would rather have their taxes go up a little bit than take a seven to ten percent jump in a year.
It's kind of what happened with the health insurance, where for several years, they held it flat, and then this year, we're getting one, you know, fifteen or more percent increase in one year, and it's...
So if we levy under the limit, let's say at two and a half percent, then maybe with the plan or hope that it would be limited to two and a half percent every year, but there would be that other two percent that ever, any year, instead of two and a half, it could be four and a half percent. And so the question, whether we do it this year, or just leave that open, is a risk in the future.
Well, it's excess levy capacity, which is not unusual in communities. Just very careful about how you use it.
What would be the purpose of going to four and a half?
So that Nick, so we don't end up with a year where we have eight percent under the limit.
Well, but, but if we keep it, if we keep it at two and a half, then it's only that extra two percent.
Okay.
So the only purpose would be if we needed money, if we needed to fund things that we could afford, which is kind of looking like maybe we'll be able to do it with just two and a half percent this year.
Could we do it incrementally? You know, do three percent this year, and three percent next year, and then get to the two and a half percent, that kind of thing? Just sort of balance it, instead of a big attack?
Yeah, we can try, but the, you know, when we do our numbers, we don't actually have final numbers from the state, so we can say, oh, we're gonna levy two and a half percent, and then actually have more capacity than we know about, so it's always an estimate, but yeah.
We could, we could. The only thing I would say is that this year, with that unexpected drop in sped, that maybe this is the year to keep it at two and a half percent, because we may need to go in, you know, next year, it might, that might be very different. You know, it looks like we can make the budget this year with the two and a half percent.
I would hate to go any higher than we need to.
I like the predictability also of two and a half percent, that probably all of us be prepared, or know it's likely to be two and a half percent every year, and just plan ahead, there are no surprises, and we do know we have that capacity if we need it, so if I had my druthers, I'd go that route.
I agree.
It's so hard to predict, because we may have, you know, increases in sped, we may have a lot of veterans move, or several veterans move into town, and we know from what the elementary school has told us, that we have a large class going into Silver Lake, so, you know, Silver Lake will certainly be up again next year, so I think, you know, trying to maintain a budget, two and a half percent's pretty reasonable.
I think we're predicted to go twenty students at Silver Lake, which is gonna shift us our percent up.
Okay.
Um, we have been talking about this, and I think this is maybe a Warren Article, Dale, or maybe not, where we have money, that we have the Pembroke savings from the settlement on the Silver Lake assessment, where the, one of the assessments was a hundred thousand dollars under what we budgeted for. That money is available, we've, we've talked about using it for OPEB during the special, our, we do it at a special town meeting, I guess we can submit on that, but, again, this is sort of a, a bigger question of what the town wants to do with that money.
That would be a good use for it.
OPEB would be a really good use for that.
So that would be a special town meeting article?
Ah, yeah, could be specials, probably, yeah. You'd be the first, you'd be the first article on the special.
But is there maybe a placeholder to that for that?
Yeah, I'll just put a placeholder in for it, to transfer some of money, you know, from available funds, and, and the motion carries, so, I mean, the motion will carry the names and the amounts and all of that kind of stuff, and where you wanna move it. But you want that, it could easily go on the special. I, I don't have a special Warren Article yet, there will be a couple, but I don't have any.
It's, it's money from this fiscal year would have to be a special town meeting.
Yeah, that's true, it's not next year, so, okay, yep.
John?
No, I just wanted to make sure that that's a special within the annual town meeting.
Yes.
So what are the other options on that? I mean, it makes total sense to me to do OPEB and to make a goodwill effort to work on that a little, and it's obviously a one-time sort of gift, thank goodness.
And I, I need some guidance from Barbara, but I, I imagine you can transfer to anything you want for, in the fiscal year, or you could just let it ride and let it turn into free cash next year.
So it might take some selling, though.
I don't think so.
Not if we're on, all on the same page, I think it probably...
Our, our OPEB liability's in excess of three million dollars, so this is a drop in a bucket, but it's a, it's, is it you, Dale, that said that bonding companies, somebody said?
It was me.
Favorably, or you're trying to make an effort to...
Any of those contingency funds that you have, put away sort of rainy days, especially for articles like that, and that's a particular hot-button issue with auditors now, is gonna bode well on a, on your Dunn and Bradstreet reporter, whoever does the, you know, assuming we wanna borrow money at some point, that's all, very good.
Yeah, it's kudos to get to ten percent.
So that, that's a really good selling point, because we're gonna probably be bonding public safety buildings.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, or, can we, do we agree that that seems like a reasonable suggestion?
Yes.
Okay?
Good.
I, I don't know the details of this, I just sort of saw, I don't know, some, a reference to it, that there was... The number that was assessed to the towns in terms of the Silver Lake debt exclusion number last year, do you know anything about this? Was not accurate, and, and the actual amount owed was a little bit less, so I don't even, I don't really know if it's a significant amount of money yet, or, or minimal, and it's money that's debt excluded, so my guess is you can only use it for putting it toward Silver Lake debt exclusion this, for fiscal seventeen, but maybe, Dale, that's another...
Wouldn't they assess it that way? Wouldn't they just assess it this year? I mean, since they've got it in their, in their, in their treasury?
If they...
Just assess us that much less this year? I mean, I would think that's the easiest way to do it.
Well, I don't know. I, I understood it was being presented as a refund, so I think that's just something we have to be mindful of, too.
Okay, so...
I'll, I'll try to find out more about it.
Yeah, if you could, I'm not sure exactly. I mean, if they, if they actually send us a check for it, you're right, it's debt excluded, so it would have to go back to a debt-excluded item. I mean, that's one of the biggest ones we owe, so we may as well just kick it into that and lower that assessment this year.
So anyway, and again, I don't, I don't know any details, and maybe I'm not even acting, and this does...
I hadn't heard anything about it, so.
Okay, um, so, something that we're concerned with, maybe you have a opinion about that?
Okay, so I've been on the Finance Committee now eight years, so I've seen, you know, Kingston, this is the first year that we've had many departments come to us and ask to for increases in salaries beyond what Wage and Personnel recommends. Now, not beyond their range, still within the range, and it had to have been, there had to have been some conversation in the top, among departments, because, like I said, I've never seen it before, and this year, there's multiple departments that are looking to increase, like step increases. We have concerns about how arbitrary it is. Some departments know about this, some don't, some are looking for a twenty percent, twenty cent increase, plus the two percent, some are looking to increase people four percent. I have been led to believe, I was at the Wage and Personnel meeting last week, that it is totally up to the department head, what kind of increase they give their employees, as long as they stay within the Wage and Personnel's recommended range. I heard that originally, these ranges were set up as steps, there were certain increases, but they didn't like that, so that's when it went to a range. I don't know, it's just, it's, go ahead, Sue, do you have more? You're good, you're good. It's, just like I said, it's, it's, it's different, and it's unusual, and I guess we are wondering how we, as a Finance Committee, you know, we're not Personnel Board, do we just go with that?
What's Wage and Personnel recommending as the overall increase?
They haven't voted yet, but they're, they're estimating, they're assuming it's gonna be two percent.
I'd recommend whatever Wage and Personnel recommends.
So what's happening is, the state...
Yeah, let me, let me just go over it. Some, I do understand to some extent, if you have an employee who, anyone who's hired new has, got to begin at the bottom of the range, if you have an employee who has fifteen years' experience, who's been with you for fifteen years, they probably shouldn't be where a new person replacing them would be starting. They should move up through that range, you know, there should be a way to move up. It's just, I guess, whether it's you, or whether we, we think there should be some kind of a personnel bylaw, policy, maybe, that says, you know, maybe people move up through these ranges all the same, and it, once they hit, you know, three years or something, they're at the max, and then they just get the two percent, same as a teacher, the police, you know, have, who have steps. I, I do, don't, I don't necessarily think they should definitely always get just two percent. Like I said, an employee who's been with you for fifteen years and has, who has all that experience, shouldn't be making the same thing as somebody who's gonna replace them makes. They should come in at a lower level.
But this is in their expense line, right?
It is in the expense line.
So their expense line is going up more than two and a half percent, because they're giving their employee a raise?
Some are going up more than two and a half percent. And I guess, I, I mean, I guess, from a budgeting point of view, this is really arbitrary, and, and someone could, under this policy, go from the bottom of the range to the top of the range in one year, if it's simply at the department head's discretion, so it would seem, it would seem like it might be a good idea to define the steps, like have them be five steps in each range, whatever, and, you know, after X number of hours, or X number of years, depending whether full or part-time, whatever, you move up a step until you max the steps out, and then you're back at the wage, whatever the annual increase is, which is how most towns operate, and it's predictable from a budget point of view. What's happening this year is not, it's, you can't budget when, because some of these increases are gonna be pretty high, and, and I don't know if the way that Lisa described it is, is written anywhere, that it's, it's totally discretionary, or, but I would, I think we would urge that this be addressed before, you know, as fast as possible, that some, something be done, some policy be adopted, or whatever, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the process is, but...
I would think it'd be Wage and Personnel that should be...
Well, what, what normal, what normally happens in towns, and, and we don't do it here, because Wage and Personnel has been in the driver's seat for so long, is they do a classification study, and they classify, someone comes in, looks at the jobs, looks at the job descriptions, classifies the job, then compares that to the rates that, the going rate, basically, for that particular position. Then they create steps through that, and then the town has a policy as to when those steps kick in, over what period of time. Sometimes, some towns don't do that and offer longevity, which is another, which is another way to do it, when you achieve a certain number of years, then you get a certain percentage of your pay as a one-time, or, and a one-time addition annually, as a longevity payment. I think the steps are probably the better way to go, because longevity can be very expensive after a while, but it would be a classification study, and we have a classification, but it's under the Wage and Personnel rule, it's, it's not really what you need, and then, and then generally, the, it's done by an outside company, somebody comes in and does it, and says, you know, a laborer, or a, or a laborer in the Highway Department should be making X under the job description that we have for it. Then you set up the steps over a period of time, then you institute a policy as to when those steps kick in, but I will tell you that it's gonna cost you more money.
Well, can I ask, we, we do have ranges that most people are comfortable with, couldn't those ranges that have already been established just be broken at this point into, into a step from the low to the high?
Yeah, and the other thing that's done is it's done on, we don't do merit evaluations, that's, that's a, pretty much a norm in other places and other communities, where everybody has to fill out an evaluation sheet on their employee every year, goes in the Personnel file, and X number of successful, successful evaluations, annual evaluations, you move to the next step, automatically.
John?
If you go back ten to twenty, well, at least twenty years, when I was actively involved in the Finance Committee, and we had some ranges, the way it was done then, because steps, you can't, you're not gonna get that done in the next two to four weeks. There is a study. The way it was done before was, if Wage and Personnel recommended two percent, and the department head decided to raise that person within their expense line four percent, but stayed within the budget, then it became a question of the Finance Committee making the decision whether they wanted to put a hole on every line item that came down that was not over two percent, and we did that, and we argued on the floor. Took some time, so that's one way to do it, it's not the ideal way, but given the timeframe you have, it may be one way you wanna think about it.
What about leaving it at Wage and Personnel's recommendation, with the understanding that we're going to look at this next year, get a plan together where, you know, we'll address it, but not spur of the moment, you know? Address it in a, in a way that we can budget and, and plan for the future?
We're not a Personnel Board, and so I think the only way, the only thing we can do is say, if you're, okay, we're gonna give you last year's salaries plus two percent, and any additional amount over that, we're subtracting that off of your request for this year, so in other words, you cover it someplace else during your budget, that's, that's really the only way we have any...
Which is the way we've done it for the last several years, is it not?
No, we've never seen this before.
No, no, not the steps, but what you just described is essentially what we've done. They get the two percent, the supervisor has the discretion within the budget that they have of squeezing out some more from the budget. I, I agree with Christine, and I, it seems like a pretty big issue, needs a lot of time, I don't get it.
Well, the only problem with that is that, so we see their broke down, broken down budget, we see what the salary is, and we say, okay, we're gonna add two percent onto that, plus a little more for your copy, or whatever, and that's their bottom line. Now, if they decide, you know what, I really don't need that extra for my copy this year, I'm gonna give my, my employee a four percent increase, well, when they come back to us next year, that employee has a four percent increase, so now it's gonna just, it doesn't really, you know, it's still, it's just gonna, next year, they're gonna, and, and next year, the copy's broken, so yeah, they do need a copy too, next year.
And four percent.
So, I mean, just so that's understood, I think that that's some of the problems, and I think, like I said, I feel like there must've been a conversation that was held that we don't know about, but I believe that some of the departments felt that they have never done this. They've paid their employees their two percent, now their employees are still at the very bottom of the range, where these other people have moved up, because other departments were playing with their numbers more. And, I don't know, I mean, you know.
And I guess we weren't necessarily looking for a solution to this year, because, but I, because it's, it's, I don't believe our place to solve it, but we wanted to make sure you're aware, and that maybe we somehow start addressing it for next year.
I agree, I mean, I think we have to address it next year and be really clear on it. I wonder if the Collins Group might be able to give us some direction along the way?
Yeah, they will, especially on job classifications and, and.
My one other concern is, I, it's fine if we have these five steps over five years, but people might come along that are very qualified, and to start them at the bottom, when they're tremendously qualified. I mean, I think whatever we decide, we end up a little handcuffed, and it's always a little arbitrary, but I totally agree, the key to it is just getting it written down and being clear, but.
And I think as part of that, you can change your policy and say that, you know, a person with adequate experience can start at step three, understanding there's still only going to be five, let's say, five steps, but I, I don't have an issue with that. I don't, I don't, I agree that you shouldn't always have to start at the bottom. I also agree that people that have been here ten years and have never gotten any kind of step increase within the range deserve one, and so it's not that, it's simply, this, this is not the right process. It shouldn't be as this haphazard, it's really actually unfair to some people. And again, from a budget point of view, it's not, not a good way to do it. That's that. I assume, as we, we got the Collins Center list of capital requests, we are obligated, under the bylaw, to report to you, they, they took over the capital planning this year, we just want to make clear that that report is, in place of our report to you, as required by the bylaw, for the list of capital requests.
So what we received, that's?
From the Collins Center.
From the Collins Center, okay, so that's what we got today, Mark, right? That I forwarded to you?
I don't know, but we, we got it a while ago, I don't know if you got an updated one?
Okay, so that's not the same thing?
We got a, a list of the capital, it's been here for weeks.
Okay.
Well, they may, they might have forwarded that to us early, because we needed it for the top of the earnings.
Oh.
Yeah, they may have, ours may have been an earlier version.
It's attached to the document we got today?
I don't think so.
No, I'll, if you don't have it, I'll forward it to you.
Please, yes.
I just assumed you had it.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think we do.
And as we've spoken to a couple of departments, they, they seem to indicate there's some things that they would like to adjust in it anyway, so, but that's, we're actually kind of moving that forward to next year, aren't we, anyway? Isn't that five-year plan actually going to? We wanted to clarify with you, this was in a discussion with the fire chief, that in a, that, excuse me, police chief, thank you, they're looking at my notes. They can read even better than I can. That's true. We had the salary that you negotiated with him, when, he, he believes that his longevity payment should be added to that salary line, and we were unclear about that, so we were looking at his guidance. Don't necessarily need an answer.
Speaking of longevity, is that in his contract?
What's his longevity payment?
Sixteen.
Twelve, I think, twelve fifty.
Between twelve and fifteen hundred.
Sixteen.
Oh, sixteen and five?
Is that in his contract?
I would say we negotiated on the basis of percentages, and so that would be additional, as far as I'm concerned.
And does it, do you need, do we need to add it to his salary line, or does it just come out of the police service?
Let me see if I've got the contract.
His longevity is just one time. She's got everything in that bag.
I know. I'd be lost if anything happened in my bag. No, I don't.
It's usually an annual payment. I don't know, I haven't seen his contract, but it's usually, longevity is generally an annual payment.
It stays on, yeah.
Stays on.
So we can check the contract, get back to you.
It's over and above the salary range, so, if there's two percent in the contract.
Right, but it's not usually added to a salary, that it then becomes negotiating a percentage on top of that. It's usually separate.
It's usually separate.
Should be paid as a separate amount, usually.
So, the answer's probably in previous years, I mean, we have his previous contract, and probably, I presume that was added to his previous contract.
We think it came out of police ser, I think it came out of police services previously, out of his budget. It was not.
I would be in favor of doing what, exactly as it has been, because I think that's how we negotiated it.
I don't believe it's been in his salary.
No.
I don't think it has either.
Is it the first time he's eligible for longevity?
I believe he said it was the first year he was going to be eligible for, so we may have.
I don't remember that coming up in contract discussion at all.
There was no discussion.
There was no discussion.
There may be a clause in the contract, which I guess we'll have to take a look at.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to get back to you on that one.
I think the next. I, I think, we have some concerns going back to the.
This is a copy of, it's on the website, it's the wage and personnel's, what they're going to be voting on on the twenty-second, just because this will.
And I don't know if you've seen the, the five-year classifications in the fire department, I don't know if that's been presented to you?
It has not been presented to us.
It was presented to us as a way to, you know, compensate people differently based on their experience level, and it was presented to us as potentially cost savings. I think we have some concerns, and we'd like to see some.
What it, what it is, as the chief said, that he wants to do this, so that if somebody leaves, and he hires somebody new, they don't start at the same rate that his experienced officers are at, they would start at a lower rate. So he definitely, he said, as of this year, everyone will continue to make exactly what they've made before, wherever it falls into that range, that it would always fall into the range. However, it does give leeway, unless we come up with some plan for steps, that those people could, under the chief's discretion, be increased.
And there's new job classifications that are at higher salaries, that many of these people have the qualifications to be at those higher salaries, so.
And they would be, they would go into that range, but their pay right now falls in that range, doesn't mean they could be raised up.
But not, but just as this is happening this year, that's not to say adjustments, and we're not saying he would or wouldn't, but what we're seeing this year is department heads just making big adjustments, and, so we have concerns about this, and wage and personnel has put it in there to be, you know, possibly adopted at, or at their hearing, so, we want to make sure you, you were aware of it. We haven't seen any numbers analysis of it, you know, what is it really actually going to mean? Obviously, there's a salary line in the budget, and that's not increasing dramatically this year, but.
It is increasing now?
No, it's two percent, I think.
Whatever.
I think it's two percent.
But I, I guess, like many of the things that we've done with our fire department, I, it, it would make me feel a lot better if we had some, a consultant look at this, and tell us what the implications of it actually are. We had someone look at the ambulance and make a bunch of recommendations, or, you know, comments about the, the long-term implications that we were sure wouldn't happen, and almost every one of them has, terms of cost, and we just, we just, may it's your attention that we have those concerns in this case as well.
You guys are not bringing easy stuff tonight. This is almost as hard as the stuff we started with.
Yeah, I thought that the reason to go full-time was, it was going to be cheaper, it'd cost us less money to run a fire department.
Well, we would present this as though it would be a cost savings, it's just that it could potentially not go the other way.
But why is the budget going up this year?
Oh, well, we, we have kind of had a question about that ourselves, right?
I mean, that's how this whole thing was presented, was that there would be a significant cost savings to the town going with this full-time setup.
So your concern is that there is the potential for savings, but there's enough discretion for the chief that we could end up spending more?
We're told there's a potential for savings, we don't, we don't know.
His budget, now he's putting any increase to the chief right now, is up about six percent.
We actually don't know his salary for this year, he's going to get up to, I think the contract.
Doesn't sound like it's going.
He didn't say contracted number.
No, doesn't sound like it's going down.
That's one of the budgets we have real concern about the sustainability of, that, like, like with Silver Lake, is that if these budgets can't keep going up at these rates, we just can't sustain those kinds of increases.
I think we should bring the chief in and talk about the, his budget. Get a better sense of what's going on.
I, and there's only one of the articles, I guess, that's been submitted to Dale, that I think we, he's told us about five different Warren articles, and he, he was going to revisit it, because we saw that that was probably more than we could entertain, but some building improvements.
I haven't seen them.
So maybe he's made a decision not to pass them on, but if you're going to review the budget, maybe we could give you that information as well. All right, it's just, I'll just give you, I'll report his budget request to you.
Thank you.
But that and Silver Lake are the, those are the departments that are, you know, significant concerns.
Now, wasn't there talk that Halifax was going to vote down the budget?
Silver Lake?
Mm-hmm.
I understand is that they reached a number where Halifax.
Okay, that they were acceptable?
I don't know, I didn't go with the Chinese, but.
All right, do we want to invite in the chief, the fire chief, next week?
Mm-hmm.
Or if not next week, the week after?
Yeah, why don't we shoot for next week, and then back up the twenty, whatever, are you, no, you're going to be gone now, right?
I'm going to be gone, the next two weeks.
Let's get him in here next week, if he can make it.
Would you guys want to join us when we have him in, or, no?
Maybe a couple of, sorry. Dale, please, we weren't planning to meet next week.
I think that's the one article, things we change.
That'd be great, but maybe a couple of us could come.
Okay, great, thank you.
Maybe, our fire department needs.
All right, so actually, in a different matter, I will tell cable TV not to expect you guys to have a meeting next week unless you tell me otherwise?
Not on our meeting schedule.
Okay, okay. Okay. John?
What was the, you know, overall Silver Lake increase, not Clinton, but just overall Silver Lake percent?
She said four and a half percent.
Our assessment.
Oh.
I guess my question is, because of the formula, or because Silver Lake is actually up four and a half percent?
I think it's a combination, like it's up four and two.
I think they'll work.
No, no, that's fine.
It's def, it's less than the four point five, because they were, their original one was at four point seven seven, and they made cuts.
So overall, where are you in your process?
We have one more department, if you're aware of, or have comments on.
It's the, it gets the award for the single largest year-over-year increase, and it would be the animal control department, and the request is for a, it's a salary increase, I think, for twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that he's on call.
Eighty-three percent increase.
How much?
Eighty-three percent.
What was?
It's a small budget, so it's not like eighty-two dollars.
So it was, it's been fifty-two fifty for the last at least four years, and this year, the request is nine thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. So, just want to bring that to your attention.
And if you have any guidance.
I would be very interested in what increase services.
You know what, that might be another discussion to bring Frank in to talk about that.
That sounds like, that's sort of the FinComs department.
Yeah.
What is his overall request?
But we just appointed him.
Salaries and operation budget.
Altogether, nine, ten, fifteen, sixteen, almost seventeen thousand dollars.
I'd be very interested in what, what is different.
We could, you can send him, send Mark what he's.
I'll, I'll forward you the budget request, if I have it here.
Oh.
Oh, you know what, if you have it here.
I think, since the, we, we hopefully are going to have the fire chief in, is it possible to get his budget request as well?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, before next week, so that we'll have that.
It's a fifty cents an hour increase. But he works a lot of hours.
And I think he's got a letter together.
Fifty cent, or, or the hours are twenty-four seven?
Yeah. Fifty cents per hour increase, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, standby, response time of under ten minutes, provided day sheets.
I think we need to look at what other towns do.
My job is an intermunicipal agreement, covers everything, no headaches, nothing for probably less than fifteen thousand.
Well, I think, we, we, the guidance we can give you is, I would want clear evidence of why anything more than the two percent was warranted.
Same thing ever for everybody, two percent, to whatever wage and personnel recommends.
No?
It has not gotten a two percent in previous years, so my guess is it's a stipend.
I think it is a stipend.
And it probably needs to be, as, as far as number of hours, and overtime, and all that stuff.
We'd have to look at that, I think there must be some agreement that, that we have on file.
We would recommend to negotiate.
I think that's appropriate, that it needs to be in here, yeah, I agree. I mean, that's not the proper venue to.
We made an appointment?
We, yeah.
With?
We appointed him.
We appointed him.
Do we have to hold off until we?
No, that's the animal control officer, which is, I mean, no, that's the inspector of animals, that's a different thing, a small piece of it.
That was inspector of animals.
Okay, okay.
It's a separate budget, too, I believe.
I, I mean, there's a, there's a budget line for that, but that, that's a separate bunch of things, counting, my father used to do this sixty years ago, was mainly counting the number of cows in town. Great job.
So we spend almost seventeen thousand dollars a year on our animal control, including, he uses his own van and his own facility.
Who would like to make that contract?
Oh, I'll do it.
I've already brought that up informally with Charlie Seaton.
We got a, an email about a, we've already talked about this tonight, but just to let you guys know, a, a bill that was filed to, let me read it to you. Been working with Senator Gobi's office to modify the unfunded mandate of the out-of-district vote transportation. So, this is a, a senate bill that is stuck in committee, and what it is, is to take away that unfunded mandate to provide transportation for kids who are going to vocational programs out of district. What they're asking for is some help to move this out of committee, the deadline is tomorrow. So, I can email all of you. So I can email all of you what they're asking for, is that if this issue is important to you, knowing that this bill would save thousands of dollars to your citizens, taxpayers, and up to $4 million in state reimbursement funds, please notify your state rep and senators and ask that they contact Representative Peish, I think it is, it's P-E-I-S-H, to ask that the bill be moved out of committee before this Wednesday, March 16th deadline. In addition, if you would contact Representative Peish yourself to seek the bill moved out of the committee, her email is alice.pesh@mahouse.gov. So I'll email this to all of you guys. It might be worthwhile to send an email to let them know that we'd like to have them look at that.
So it's asking that we no longer be required to fund that? I just...
We would not be required to fund transportation costs for VOK students that are going to VOK programs out of district. We'd still do the tuition, but not the transportation, which is like 20 to 30,000 dollars per student. That's it?
Anything, other words from FinCom? Other words from the Board of Selectmen? The audience? The videographer?
No.
Okay, FinCom? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service and time. Board of Selectmen, I think we've hit everything on the agenda and so appreciate everyone being here and we will do it again next week. A good week to everyone.
Good night.
Good night.